Call to auditor this evening's meeting, the November 12th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. As a preliminary matter, I'd like to confirm first that all members and persons anticipated to be on the agenda can hear me and be heard. So as I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Ms. Roziers? Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomanz?
Don't unmute yourself.
Yes.
Mr. Waller? Mr. Waller? Mr. Perizzi?
Yes.
Mr. Gunnison?
Yes.
Okay, and then for staff, Ms. Kojemo?
Yes.
Attorney Hill?
Yes.
Okay, and then for speakers, it looks like we have Mr. Angler? Mr. O'Connell?
Present.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
Jeff Angler, should we be waiting for?
Mr. Winslow could not join us this evening. He extends his apologies, but he was just unable to make it, so we can proceed without him.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so introduction to remote meeting. This open meeting of the Grafton Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which can be posted to the town's website at www.grafton-ma.gov, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law, as is the case with our hearing tonight. This meeting will feature public comment for the public hearing portion only. For this meeting, the Grafton Zoning Board of Appeals is convening by video conference via Zoom and by TV with dial and access as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting has been recorded, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other people may be able to see you, and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording of this meeting and preserved forever. All supporting materials that have been provided members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. As we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and ensure accurate meeting minutes. Chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will allow ZBA members to comment for items of public comment. After members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment either by way of Zoom or by phone. For Zoom, to request to speak, the meeting... For public comments, request acknowledgement to speak, please use the chat feature in Zoom to request to speak, and the administrator will enable you to speak when it's your turn. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So now that that is out of the way, our first order of business this evening is a continuation of case number 754, which is a notice of project change for the Fisherville Terrace, Chapter 40B. And I believe at this point... I don't even know who I should turn it over to. I think we're expecting some input from the developer, but I think it was mostly a draft of the decision. So I'll open it up to Mr. Angler or the developer. Do you have anything to add this evening at this point, or are you ready to roll?
Yeah, we have no new information to present. We believe we've submitted everything that the board has requested. We're in possession of Mr. Hill's draft decision, which he circulated earlier this week. We don't have really any material changes. We provided a few... There were a couple of conditions where they were left, I guess, open-ended, if you will. We've since answered those, sent those comments to Mr. Hill. We're happy to discuss those, but we don't have any real issues with the draft decision that was circulated.
Okay. Mr. O'Connell, do you have anything to submit?
I just wanted to say, we had intentions of sending our comments to Dan, but I just found them in my outbox. Apparently, they're just sitting in my outbox. The email won't go. But they're mine, and I'm sure we'll talk through them in other discussions this evening.
So I guess at this point, Dan, where do we stand? Attorney Hill, where do we stand?
Sure. So I actually had a busy morning. I spoke with Paul Canoyer to get some more information on the Main Street road construction project, because I think that does play a role here in the decision-making for the zoning board. So I got some clarification in terms of what that project's going to look like. And then we also, I got some more information from Steve. We got the design plans. So I think it probably makes sense to just pull up the draft decision, and then as we go through it, I think we're going to end up talking about some of these issues, so we can use that kind of as an outline for tonight's discussion. Do you want me to share my screen?
Whatever's easier. If you have it and you can share it, why don't we do it that way?
Okay. Here with me. All right. Can everyone see the Word document that's on my screen?
I can, yes.
Okay, so I'll start at the top, and this format is obviously familiar to everybody. This is not a... You know, it's going to be a five-page decision. It's not going to be something that we've delved into a lot of conditions. Since all the conditions from the 2010 decision are going to carry over to this decision. So the first paragraph is just the background. The original decision in 2010 was approving a 72-unit condominium. The references to the census parcels and book and pages, the recording of the decision are in that paragraph. The next paragraph or next section describes the proposed changes. So the plans that we're going to reference and the proposed changes are the civil site plans that were filed on August 21st, or dated August 21st, the six sheets. And then we've got the architectural plans that were dated June 4th, and I believe there were seven sheets attached to that set. So the decision is going to require that the project comply with all of these plans. The next paragraph speaks to the point that we determined this to be a substantial change, not insubstantial. We conducted a hearing, a two-night hearing. We had our peer-view engineer provide comments. And actually, I'll add the reference. Jeff submitted a comment letter, I believe, a couple of days ago, so I'll add that here. All right, we got the comments from the DPW, the Police Department, Health, School, and Water District. It was a traffic impact study and intersection site distance plan that was filed as well. So the finding section is pretty bare bones, since there's really not much to find. The total impervious area is increasing to 6.5 acres, but there's no material changes to lay out of the road for the utilities. Although I want to talk about the detention basin when we get to it. The consulting engineers reviewed the plans, finds them to be in order, and finds them to be capable of complying with the stormwater standards. Paragraph three, the applicant is not asking for any changes to the conditions we already imposed in 2010, is not asking for any additional waivers. Therefore, the project has to comply with all those conditions and waiver decisions. And I just point out that one of the main conditions right here is that the applicant still has to submit final engineering plans for review before they can start construction. I added a finding that the town is expected to begin a large public works project on Main Street. And talking to Paul today, it sounds like that's going out to bid sometime in February. We expect ground to be broken at some point in May or June. So, you know, he is concerned about sequencing, and I think we need to build in a condition on this that, you know, one of the things that the applicant is obligated to do is to install a 36-inch drain pipe in Main Street, taking the excess stormwater from the site down the road to, I guess, the elementary school. And what's in the state-funded Main Street plan is... And by the way, just for background, in case of board members are not familiar with this project, this is a road construction project that's paid for mostly by the state. And the way it works is that the state pays... Well, the town pays for the engineering, and the town is using VHB as the design engineer, but the state's going to pay for everything else. And so it's really the state that's driving this project, not so much the town. And it's pretty much done in terms of design, and it's just a matter of finalizing the design and getting the bids out, and they expect that to go out in February. So because there's going to be this 36-inch drain line going down the street, the concern is we want to make sure that gets put in either before or concurrent with the trenching that's going to happen in the street. Obviously, we don't want that trench to be dug after Main Street's already been acclaimed and built. And the current design plans for the project call for an 18-inch pipe, so this is obviously an upgrade that the developer's going to have to pay for, and that was agreed to in the 2010 decision. The other concern with the Main Street project is making sure that the utilities that are in Main Street get stubbed off, again, before the construction project, the Main Street project begins. And what Paul has educated me on is that in Main Street currently, there's sewer line, a water line, and a gas line. And of course, we have overhead electric wires. So what he's saying is that the developer really needs to connect the gas, sewer, and water over to the project site, stub it off before the state highway project begins, again, so that we're not digging up Main Street after the state has already finished the construction project. So I emailed that to Steve O'Connell today. I don't know, Steve, have you had a chance to think about that? Or is there any concern with that sequencing?
No, Dan, there's no concern. I did send you back that response, where I gave my responses in red font underneath each of your comments. I sent it at around 3:30 today.
All right.
But generally, no. I mean, you know, generally speaking, we're absolutely in agreement. I think we could talk a little bit about the way that a condition could be worded that would provide flexibility while obligating the developer to provide the 36-inch pipe, but just because of the, you know, the flexibility needed to coordinate with DOT or the contractor awarded the project just, you know, seems like it would be reasonable, but still obligating the developer to provide what he's supposed to provide.
Okay, yeah, the only thing we want to avoid is having to dig up Main Street after it's been paved, obviously, after the project, so that's the concept.
Absolutely.
So as long as you guys are okay with that condition, then I think we're going to be all set.
Yeah, definitely. That would actually be a huge burden on the developer to do that work after the fact. So, yeah, we have the same, you know, common interest here.
Okay, and I guess, you know, my question would be, and maybe this goes to Jeff, that just in terms of timing, I mean, how quickly are you going to be... Let's say there's permit issues tonight. How quickly are you going to be able to get your mass housing approval and whatever other financing you need to get lined up in order to actually start construction?
Yeah, my client's already begun that, so we'll be... You know, one of the reasons we have such urgency is, you know, this is through nobody's fault, dragged on a little bit longer than we had hoped, because we recognize there's this project starting. So presuming we close tonight, and we get a written decision stamped imminently, we're going to work immediately on final approval. I don't know, Dan, if you ever are responsible or involved with that, you know, being in the shoes, but, you know, it's going to take 45 to 60 days to wrap that up. But, you know, you can start working on your construction drawings. Steve can finish his engineering plans, so there's a whole bunch of things that can go on concurrently. So we fully expect to be ready, you know, early in 2021 to begin with the engineering stuff, or the site work, I should say.
Yeah, okay.
The other thing, Dan, that's important to know, sorry to interrupt, is when the Main Street construction project starts, it's going to start on one end or the other, depending on the winning bidder. And it'll take a little bit of time, no matter which end they start on, to get to this location. So we're not relying on that time, but it's kind of like a contingency.
Okay, and just for the board's identification, what I put on the screen is, are the road construction project plans that MassDOT has printed up? And this is the section in front of the site. There's going to be a widening, so that the paved surface, the... Okay, so this here is the project site. The paved surface of the road is going to be a little bit wider than it is today, because it's going to be two bike lanes, one on each side. There's also going to be two concrete sidewalks, one on each side. I mean, there is today as well. This area here apparently is going to be a green strip, and these are trees that would be planted. I mean, these are etched in stone, so obviously, these can move. The project driveway is going to be somewhere in this vicinity. The one, the main concern I had in looking at these is to make sure that the site distances weren't going to get worse with this project. And I don't think they are, and Jeff actually looked at this this afternoon, and he concurred. So you're fortunate that you have a really wide right-of-way here, and so cars exiting the project site are going to be able to pull right up to the edge of the road. And you can tell that there's a lot of right-of-way in both directions, and that right-of-way can be kept clear of trees and things like that, that otherwise might block site distance. So that's good.
Yeah.
But this is the current plan right here in front of the site.
And Dan, if I may, while you have that plan up, everyone can see that the sidewalk on the project side of Main Street is actually being extended, because right now, it currently terminates, you know, just short of the project driveway on the right side of this plan. But as part of the project, they're actually going to be constructing the sidewalk up Main Street on the project side. So I think maybe potentially, when it comes time to construction drawings, the crosswalk that the Fisherville Terrace plan showed to access the sidewalk across the street, because that's the only sidewalk that would have currently goes up Main Street, you know, may not be needed.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, Dan, if I can just interject a question while this drawing's up, because it may or may not be relevant. I have a question, and I guess it's for Steve. If the town slash state was planning to put an 18-inch pipe in, and what was designed as part of this approval was a 36-inch pipe, is the pipe doing the same thing?
So that's a very important point, Bill. So the state has obviously determined that the pipe needs to be 18 inches to handle the runoff that their drainage system is going to collect. And it's also important to note that the Fisherville project will not add to the peak flows, because all of those peak flows are being mitigated on-site. But as the water is discharged from the basins within the project, long after the peak part of the storm has passed, and it's discharged down these pipes, there is capacity in the town's drainage system to handle the flow from Fisherville project in the 18-inch pipe. The reason the pipe was increased to 36 was because of that large watershed. Everyone knows about the culvert under Main Street that floods the houses in the back across the street. It's a large watershed that extends all the way up into Sutton. And, you know, the amount of runoff that is produced by that large watershed, you know, other than doing a fairly elaborate watershed analysis that, you know, can be difficult and time-consuming and have some elements of uncertainty, everyone agreed, and Jeff Walsh concurred, that it would just be safe and conservative to have a 36-inch pipe handle that flow down Main Street. So the Main Street 36-inch pipe is rarely to handle the water that gets diverted from the culvert under Main Street that floods those houses in the back. So it's a conservative kind of provision that was made.
Yeah, you know, I may have this slightly wrong in my memory, but, you know, I thought really what we were asking a developer to do was essentially fix a problem that already existed, or, you know, to help fix it, you know, because some work had to be done anyways, was to help fix a problem that already existed. And I guess my thought is that here comes the state and the town, and they're going to go right through the exact same problem area, but they're not necessarily doing anything to help fix it, or have we just really gone way conservative? So that's what I was just trying to understand.
Yeah.
You know, where the 18 versus 36 came from, but... Okay, I think I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, so going back to the decision, so I've started drafting the conditions here, and we'll start at the top. The... Obviously, the first change is changing this from 72 units to 100 units in 50 buildings. So that's this condition number one. Condition number two, updates the streetlight locations. There was just one change, according to Jeff Walsh, that the... One of the stations on the road had changes from 2440 to 2475. Steve, have you had a chance to look at that? I mean, can you confirm that that's the correct location for a streetlight?
You're muted, Steve. You're on mute.
Sorry. So the road station did not change, but the correct station that Jeff provided is accurate, 2475.
Okay, and all the other ones are still accurate, right? Because Jeff thought that that was the only one that I had to change in the decision.
Yep, I checked that this afternoon as well.
Okay, and you've got the old decision, Steve? You have the 2010 decision?
Yes. Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay. The next area that I'm flagging here is condition D4 from the old decision. And let's see if I can pull up the old decision if I have it here saved.
And while you're pulling that up, Dan, I can probably provide some commentary. So yes, the decision was there in 2010. But what I can tell you is that during the preparation of the final engineering plans, consistent with that decision, Stormwater Basin was placed in that small loop road and approved by the board.
That was approved by the board?
Yeah, they endorsed a set of plans that shows that.
Was this back in like 2018 or something?
Yeah, yep, 2018, 2019. The date of the endorsed plans is 2019, March of 2019.
Okay.
I remember something along those lines.
This may be an opportunity to probably correct an oversight. So, you know, since the board, you know, approved those as final engineering plans, and it conflicts with this condition, we may just ask the board to maybe as part of this modification revise that decision or amend it.
Well, I think all we need to do then is take out this paragraph, this first paragraph of D4. I don't think the second paragraph changes. I mean, at this point, now this is going to be one rec area, right? The one that's in the middle of the big loop road?
No, there's actually one up in the bottom left-hand corner of the plans, off of some off-street parking spaces. So we just, it just got moved.
Okay, where is it?
Next plan sheet. Yep, so over there, bottom left corner of the plan, adjacent to that stormwater basin. That text near your hand, where your hand was, says recreation area.
I see, okay. So do you have a landscape plan prepared yet for this?
No, we do not. It'll be part of the final engineering plans. It'll be essentially the same, except the street trees will have to be just rearranged so they don't conflict with new driveway locations.
Okay, all right. So we don't have a landscape plan, but you're going to have to file one as a part of your post-permit submission. And those landscape plans will provide the details for all this area, this rec area in the middle, as well as the other one?
Yes, and just so you know, Dan, that there was a landscape plan provided as approved by the board in 2019, and it's very comprehensive. It'll just have to be slightly revised for the street trees, as I indicated, so they don't conflict with new driveway locations.
Okay.
But everything inside the loops and, you know, outside of the street trees, or the roadway alignment, will be the same. It was a very comprehensive plan.
All right, so I'm just going to make a note here that we're going to strike the first paragraph of D4. All right, and then the next issue is what we talked about in terms of sequencing of the off-site drainage work with the Main Street construction project. You know, so I distracted this to say that the deadline for completing the off-site drainage improvements is going to change from prior to the issuance of the second building permit to prior to the commencement of the Main Street reconstruction project. You know, I don't know, maybe we should be a little more flexible in that language, so that perhaps, you know, if you guys end up coordinating with the contractor, you know, if they're digging trenches, you might as well put your pipe in at the same time as they're doing their other trenching. So I don't want to have you guys in a footfall here, but maybe we can tweak this language a little bit so that it's prior to or concurrent with the Main Street project. Does that make sense?
That's exactly what I was thinking, prior to or concurrent with.
Well, to your point too, the commencement would be, you know, the beginning of the project, you know, on one far end of the street. So I think concurrent is appropriate.
Okay.
I guess, Dan, I kind of wondered the need for the condition at all, or, you know, the amendment to the condition, because, you know, for whatever reason, they get hung up, and they have to wait a year to actually start construction. Then, you know, then they're going to have to dig up Main Street. I mean, we're not going to say the project can't go forward, but they're going to have to dig up Main Street and install their piping, you know, just like anyone else would if they're, you know, doing work on a new street. So, I mean, if the applicant's okay with the language, that's fine, but, you know... I think it's just to their advantage, and they know it, to make sure that they are ahead of or concurrent with the work, so, you know.
Well, I think, I mean, your point's well taken. I think we can live with the condition. And if heaven forbid, your scenario plays out, we'll need to submit a minor modification to the board for their review, because we'll have missed the window, obviously, which will be to our detriment. But I think if we can live with that. But I think if we can live with that.
Okay. All right.
Okay. And I think I also want to put in something in here as well that, that the utilities, um, the, the sewer water and gas that's in Main Street, uh, should be connected, should be brought to the site again prior to the commencement or concurrent with this Main Street construction project. Are you okay with that, Steve?
Yeah, yeah, that, that's fine. We're going to do that anyway, so that's easy.
Are you planning on putting the, uh, electric wires underground or, or over the, uh, over Main Street?
Uh, they will, well, it'll be ultimately determined by the electric company, but there'll prob- there'll be a riser pole at the project entrance and then underground all throughout the project. So, uh, the location of that riser pole and the need for a transformer either up on a pole or on the ground will all be part of the electric company's design. So it's hard to say, uh, but, uh, definitely be one pole at the project entrance and then, then underground in the site.
All right. Just scrolling down here, I want to make sure my street lamp condition is in. Yeah, it's under there, okay. So just going back to, now we're at number, number five. Uh, I added this condition, so that we're clear that this road is, we, we already said this road's going to remain private, it's not going to become a public way, but, um, I, I wanted to add this condition as well, just, just to confirm that the road is never going to serve more than a hundred units and, and will not be used as access to some other property adjacent to this property. Because the road is not conforming to, to town standards. So, is this okay with you guys?
Yes, yes.
No objection.
Yeah, fine.
All right. Uh, and I also wanted to plug in a condition about the condominium. I, I looked in our twenty-ten decision and I didn't see any discussion of conditions relating to the roads. And I felt, and, and what, what I've been doing since twenty-ten is being a little bit more explicit as to, uh, what, what the town or the zoning board expects is going to happen in the future. And, uh, so, so this condition establishes, you know, three basic ground rules that, that there's not going to be any vehicle parking on the street. Vehicles have to be parked in parking spaces. The condo trust that's created is responsible for enforcing parking rules. And that the condo trust is responsible for, you know, maintenance of the road, uh, snow storage and disposal of snow. So.
Dan, I think, I think we're okay. We're okay with those as you've drafted them.
Yeah, it actually makes it easy to enforce. Makes it easy to enforce for the condo trust when the time comes that it's in the decision.
Okay. And then the next condition deals with the streetlights issue. So the police chief made a comment that, uh, he'd like to see more illumination at the intersection, which is a, a good comment. So I talked to Paul Knoyer today about this and, um, there is a, there is a, a utility pole pretty much across the street. Uh, I think it's pole number fifty-three. And, um, so that, if that pole gets moved, uh, then we, we'd have to work on it, or a, a different option. But, but the plan would be that the lamp, that the, uh, street light would be installed on pole fifty-three. And it would be subject to the approval of the DPW director in terms of the specs. You know, the, the applicant will be responsible for it, responsible for buying the, the, uh, the street lamp and responsible for installing it. But, you know, the, 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 the specs for the lamp itself would be subject to approval of the DPW director. And if it can't go on pole fifty-three for whatever reason, then the applicant would just go to the DPW director and ask where, where the, where the lamp should go. That's what we've got here.
Yeah, that sounds great. We're, we're fine with that.
All right. So that, that's it for substantive conditions. I, I did also confirm with the water district today that, that there was adequate water pressure. I, I didn't see your email, Steve. Did you respond to that question that I gave you about the water pressure?
Yeah, I did, you know, I, that, that sort of engineering work was done a long time ago. And, uh, even though I have a very extensive set of files and records on this project, I, I couldn't find anything. And I, and I don't think Jeff has anything either. We, we tried to inquire with John, but John's traveling, which is why he couldn't be on this meeting tonight, so I don't think he had access to anything. But.
Okay, well.
Unfortunately, I just, I don't have.
Steve Lamoyne at the, at the South Grafton Water District, uh, told me that y- y- someone over there did some fire flow tests a couple of years ago, uh, that they have adequate pressure in the street. It's like seventy, I think. And, and you, you're showing a booster station location on the, on the plan. So obviously you're going to have to, uh, increase the pressure to get up the hill.
Right.
So I, I don't think we need another condition on that. But I'll take a look and if, if we need to add something in, in, in a condition, it, all it would be is just simply that you have to provide adequate water pressure, uh, in accordance with the requirements of the fire department and the South, South Grafton Water District. If we already have something in the, in the twenty-ten decision, I won't put something in here, but if I don't, I'll just stick something like that at the, at the end. Does that work?
Yeah, that's all right, Dan.
Okay. So that, that's all I had. I think, I think we're pretty well covered. You know, I, I looked at Jeff's letter from a couple of days ago and we, we've checked all the boxes, so. I'll turn it back to you, Bill.
So about Jeff's letter from a couple of days ago, am I the only one who can't find that?
Katrina emailed it today.
Oh.
I sent you an email with like six different attachments today. That was a letter from Jeff, the revised site plan, graphic.
Yeah, I got it, okay. Um, I, I was looking for something from him.
I don't think I saved it.
No, I'm sure I had, now that, now that I know what I'm looking for, I'm sure I have it. Uh, you mailed that today, Katrina?
Yes, you, I sent it out. Draft decision.
Got it, I got it.
Ten fourteen this morning.
Yep, I got it. Uh, Graves, um, all right. Okay, all right, I did read this. All right. Got it. I thought maybe there's something else. So we have this draft, um, decision. It sounds like really at this point it's complete. You know, I, I don't, well, I guess we need to check if there's any more public input because this is, is still an open public hearing. So where did all that control stuff go? Nothing in Q and A, there's nothing in chat, um. Do we have even anyone else on this meeting at this point? Where's the attendees, participants? We have one attendee, Travis Brown.
Yep, Travis is with me. He was, uh, here as backup if, uh, if I had to jump off to another meeting, which is, starting shortly.
Okay, um, can we just check to see if there's anybody on the phone before we close this out and, and? How do we make that happen, Katrina? Checking for somebody on the phone?
Hold on.
Okay.
Bill? 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 No one's on the phone, are they? Okay.
Okay, then, um, I think the thing that I should be doing at this point is, is closing the public hearing. Are we all in agreement? We've got everything we need, no more public inputs necessary, we're ready to roll, right? So, um, my mouse again, I got too many screens. So at this point, um, I think a motion to close case number seven fifty-four to, uh, the public hearing for case number seven fifty-four, please.
So moved.
Thank you. And, um, we're, the five sitting members are all able to vote and it's right, Marian, you missed, but you, you, you watched it and signed the form, whatever you needed to do. So, okay, so then, um, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. DeRogers?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomanz?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes, so we're closed to public input. So at this point, um, Dan, I mean, do, can, can we vote on what you've just drafted in front of us or how, how should we do this?
Would, you could move to approve the, uh, proposed changes to the comprehensive permit project as, as shown on the submitted plans. Uh, and, and as described in the preliminary draft decision, uh, subject to a final decision being prepared and circulated, uh, to the board members this week.
Um, so we'd be voting on it and approving it tonight and then, um, we wouldn't be voting on it again. It would just presumably what we just saw would be it, it would be only minor changes of any, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and Katrina, I, I think you got the, you'll be able to look at the recording of this to get that motion, but, you know, if somebody just wants to go with the motion that Dan basically just said, I think would be good. Bill, you're muted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Um, discussion? We're a quiet group tonight, aren't we? Uh, I mean, I think this is fairly straightforward at this point. As I'd said at the last meeting, uh, this has been ongoing now for ten years or so and it's, um, I'm, I'd like to see this thing get built, so let's, uh, let's get it done. So hearing no further discussion, um, again, a roll call vote, uh, Ms. DeRogers?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomanz?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. So I think we're good at this point. Dan, you'll finalize that and, um, circulate it, but then eventually, uh, we, we, we should be able to, good, good to go. Okay.
Thank you.
While, before, uh, hey, Jeff, before you take off, because you may know the answer to this question, um, or I think John had submitted a letter for an extension.
Yeah, that's, that's not going to be necessary because, uh, provi- th- this will, will reset the clock.
Okay. Okay, then, uh, we don't need to worry about that.
Yeah, so I presume Dan, uh, will get, uh, the updated draft, uh, to you all. I mean, tonight's Thursday, so maybe next week, uh, you guys confirm it, you sign it, and then Katrina stamps or the town clerk, excuse me, stamps it. And then we, and then it has to go because it was a public hearing, there's still a twenty-day appeal period. Once it's, once it's stamped, the, 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 the timeline resets, so we should be fine.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Next order of business will be the, um, minutes that we've been putting off. We've got three sets. I actually did some red lines, so those are my comments. Katrina, if you could display them one by one, that'd be good. So like the nine-three ones first, I suppose? You want me to show?
You're on mute, Katrina.
All right.
All right.
Let me see if I can do it now. There we go. So this is nine-three. You want, is that the one you wanted, Bill?
Yeah, I wonder what happened to my red line?
There, you didn't have any on the nine-three one. They had them on the, on the nine. The nine-twenty-four ones and the ten-twenty-two, but nine-three didn't have any.
The, the, so the mi- the primary change, uh, of any substance was right, uh, at the chairman calls meeting, daughter and takes roll call of members, staff and others. I made the same change on all three. Um, I think, I think, uh, Katrina had gone through and, and listed out everyone that we roll called. So I think that's the primary change that I made on the nine-three minutes.
I have a comment.
Yep.
Members present, the question I have is, some of it is, uh, mister, miss, it seems to be inconsistent. Uh, some of it's first name, some of it's mister. Can we just go with?
I do cut and paste it, but I'll fix it. I'll make it all the same.
Yeah, I, I just think, you know, just the names would be consistent.
Yep, that's fine.
And on the second page, uh, the, uh, third paragraph down, missed, starting with, uh, Chris Mulvey. The last sentence informs the board that they will be filing their plans with the Conservation Commission due to the location of the wetlands. Right now it says they will be filing with the Conservation Commission their plans. Do I just, minor thing? Just put their plans after filing.
Okay. Got it.
You want to approve them as we go along, Bill, or do them as a group?
Yeah, no, no, we should. If, if anyone else have any, um, changes or comments on the meeting minutes from nine-three? So hearing, hearing none, um, uh, motion to accept the meeting minutes of September third as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, any discussion, hearing none. Ms. DeRogers?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomanz?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
And chairman votes yes. So we can go to the next ones, which would be?
Nine-twenty-four.
Nine-twenty-four?
Yeah. I have the same comment on, uh, Katrina, on the opening members present.
Yep, I'll fix it.
And I have a couple of comments on the second page.
Okay.
You're working, you're working to put that up, right, Katrina?
Yeah. Oh, second, oh, sorry. There we go. Sorry about that, guys.
I have a question.
I'm still seeing September third.
That was weird, I had two different screens up, so hold on. There you go.
There we go. Okay, go ahead, uh, Bill?
Yeah, just the opening, uh, members present, the same comment I had in the earlier one. Uh, on the second page, the, uh, second bullet, increase the number of parking spaces to four hundred and nineteen total, four point nine spaces per dwelling unit. Is that correct?
That's, yes, that's what I had gotten, but I'll double-check the numbers.
Okay.
No, I, I think that is correct.
Okay. Uh, and in the, uh, discussion with board and, and those bullets, as you look down the bullets, uh, increase of impervious surface due to changes rather than coverage. Increase of impervious surface due to changes. And then the next bullet, number of extensions since the start of the project versus of the start of the project.
Okay.
And then another, uh, single entrance exit and exit and increase in the number of vehicles. That's what we discussed.
Okay.
And then, uh, further down the page, Jeff Walsh of Graves Engineering, uh, the second part of that sentence, water management, comma, hydrology, drainage, water runoff and impervious surface increases. That was, he answered my question that I brought up at that. And then the next to last bullet on the bottom, need updated soil testing, need for updated soil testing.
Okay.
And then on the last page, it says, need, uh, but halfway down, need additional information from the applicant. I would just say there, additional information requested from the applicant. That's-
Okay.
Those are the only comments-
Any other changes? So motion to, any, anyone else? So, uh, motion to accept the meeting minutes of September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any, any discussion, hearing none, Ms. DeRoziers?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Yelmanns?
Yes.
Sorry, I went out of order and confused myself.
Yeah.
Chairman votes yes. Next up will be?
Ten-twenty-two.
Ten-twenty-two. So again, I made a change, similar change, um, at the top and then, um, if you scroll down a bit more, I think it may be mostly formatting type changes. I, uh, put in, um, a couple of minor changes there. And any, did I make any on page two?
It's the same thing, adding turning point.
Yeah, turning, turning point. Um, any other changes, comments?
I have the sec, a cou, couple of comments, one on the second page, one on the third page.
Go ahead.
Second page, Elmera Estates, Katrina, uh, the sentence it starts with explains that. As you go down through that and it says three dot three dot three four of the Grafton zoning bylaw, comma, and I would just put in quotes, the required ten-foot vegetated buffer around the shared or all driveways, end quote, was not requested, and that just defines what we were talking about at that, on that issue.
Okay.
That's, that's what they were requesting. Then I have one, uh, on the third page at the top, the same thing, three, 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 four of the Grafton zoning bylaw requiring that a ten-foot vegetated buffer around the perimeter of lots rather than bylaw requiring at, it's, take out the word at and just say, a ten-foot vegetated buffer.
Okay.
Those are the other comments I had.
Okay.
Katrina, did, um, I did these on my work computer, did I, did they end up with a, uh, footer of confidential authorized use only?
Yeah, but it doesn't matter because I, I retype them anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, these, this, this won't get, I, 'cause I have them as a draft in, on my computer and I retype that, that I have in there as a draft and make it the final copy.
Okay, alright, as long, alright, just as long as that doesn't get filed.
It doesn't. No, 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 this does not get filed at all.
That's fine.
Bill, I'm sorry.
So, any other comments?
Yeah, Bill, just at the very bottom where it says review of minutes from nine-four and nine-twenty-four, tabled until eleven-twenty-two, that should say eleven-twelve, twenty-twenty. Yep, okay.
Yep. Other comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Regarding the executive minutes, we've got a couple. Can, can we just make comments and not have a discussion and send those back to Katrina? And let her come up with a final for your approval? Is there some easy way? We've got two executive sessions, one going back to February and one going back to, uh, I think they were both, they, yeah, February twelfth. I know, this is some way to make those disappear by just making comments.
I, I don't know, Bill, to be honest, um, and that may be a- Yeah, and that may be a good question for like our town clerk or somebody, but I don't know what her sta, status is. But I have a feeling we're gonna have an executive session coming up in the near future, so we may be able to just take care of it then.
Okay. Sounds good, Mr. Chairman.
So, uh, entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes of October twenty-second, twenty-twenty as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, roll call vote, Ms. DeRoziers?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yelmanns?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Um, that's it for what's on our agenda? Do we have any new cases or anything, and a new business we need to talk about? I didn't hear you, Katrina, but I think you said no.
No, nothing has come in.
Okay. Alright, then, um, motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn and wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
I need a second.
Second.
Second. Oh.
Question, are we done, we don't have anything else on the calendar, right? Not at the moment, no.
Okay, okay.
We're out of business.
Oh, boy. Have a nice one, everyone.
Alright, so, um, oh, Katrina, you, um, you're gonna do minutes for Monday's meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I did not have a cha, I did not have a chance to even start them today 'cause of all the emails and stuff I was dealing with on Fisherville today.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, 'cause I don't wanna, we, we don't wanna forget that.
Nope, I'll, I'll do them when I do these.
Yep, alright, so we have a motion to adjourn, any other discussion? Hearing none, um, again, roll call vote, Mr. DeRoziers?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yelmanns?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes, we're done. Uh, thank Mr. Rob, I assume Bill Roboto's in the booth, thank you, Bill?